Are you gonna be here?
Are you gonna be here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you want which one?
I'll be here, I'll go Yak it with him.
The guy from Orion is still working.
With the, uh...
Is he from Renton, Washington?
He's actually the one that we can go...
Okay. I just had a call from, somebody from Renton, Washington, I don't know.
Right there is the best one.
I don't know anybody in Renton, Washington.
I can't get this one to... Are we good with one, Melissa? Yes, it is.
That one right there? Yes.
I guess, we're kinda, this is the only thing on our agenda, correct?
Yep.
Come on up. Ernie wants you, come on up. We'll...
I need to hammer this.
Oh! Is it a public hearing?
Yes.
Oh!
That's what it was all because of the post.
So you're recording it too?
I am.
Alright. Alright. Kim, would you read the, uh, the post? Do the role call.
Commissioner Soupley?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert is absent. Commissioner Attell?
Present.
Administrator Bruner?
Here.
Attorney Baxter?
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County clerk and recorder. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of an AR 35-plus rezoning request for the proposed rescinding of exemption P-47-84, wherein applicants Michael S. Goodman and Deborah J. Cody wish to convey 15 acres more or less to the Brown Family Trust, whereby creating a 35-acre more or less parcel. Properties are located at 13061 and 13045, Road 38.7, Memphis, Colorado, located north of Road N. 3, west of Road 38.9, situated in Section 1, Council 36, north, range 14, west, NMPM. The hearing will be held Monday, July 3rd, 2017, Commissioner's Hearing Room, Montezuma County District Courthouse, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. The meeting begins at 1:30 PM. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office from 305 District Courthouse, Cortez, Colorado, or access online at httpmontezumacounty.org with Department's planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801. With questions, this file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours. Dated this 21st day of June 2017, Kim Purcell, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Cortez Journal on Friday, June 23rd, 2017, and Commissioner Lambert is here.
He actually walked in on time. We started a minute early.
Leanne, Ernie, what do we have going on here?
So, this is an exemption. The existing 20-acre tract, which is actually up here, was created in 1984 by Resolution P-47-84. The Goodman property, which is located south of that existing...
Oh, go ahead.
...property. They are actually adding acreage to the existing Brown Family Trust here, which will result in this tract being over 35 acres and that one remaining at 45. So, basically, it takes both of those being 35 acres plus out of our jurisdiction, exceeding that acreage.
Gotcha.
We, this is kind of a unique situation, and we don't see this very often. So, Ernie and I decided to just make sure that everything's clean, that we would rezon the property, as well as rescind the existing resolution that created that 20-acre tract.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Oh, right there.
Okay.
Is there, what's our purpose in this? Just to get it out of the 35-acre?
The Browns are absentee landowners and they wanted to do some, sell some properties. They had 80 acres and for some reason, they've decided to get their neighbor's property. He's a doctor, Philadelphia somewhere, and he's just working with his neighbor. I first became acquainted with his property four years ago, and I don't think we need to go here, but he wanted to divide it and subdivide it into a parcel that would remain. He wanted to do a boundary adjustment with the neighbors to the south, but he could never get along, get the paperwork done to the neighbors to the south, so they could have a parcel that was over 35.
You're talking Mr. Goodman wanted to do this?
Yes. Mr. Goodman wanted to transfer property to the, property to the south. But, this is a unique situation area. That's a road that serves, this is a private road. Steve Boyd owns the roadway, and anytime they build a new parcel, he gets money to add that into his C.D.O.
Mm-hmm.
So, as long as we can change the size of parcels, we can't create new parcels without going too further.
Where's the access road? Is that the little...
Goes south.
It's south.
Goes south to 184, and from here, it's about two miles to the highway.
This is all up on the hill.
Right. From the Brown Family Trust, the parcels to the east and to the north, access off the Millard Road.
But once, you know, once this happens, or, you know, whatever you guys decide, here, pulling it out of that resolution will, I mean, that, that takes it out of county...
County jurisdiction.
Until they want to do something different in the future.
If they choose to subdivide it later, then that would pull it back in.
Start all over again.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, well, we'll...
And I, I'm sure we have to call you in here on this date.
That's alright, it was advertised, and, yep.
It's okay. We'll open up to public comment. Anybody like to comment? If you come up, say your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and go back for discussion with the commissioners.
None other than me.
Commissioner Lambert?
Does it take, uh, two motions? One to rescind the...
You can, you can do, do it all in one motion, say that you're gonna rescind it and then approve this.
And the zoning as well? Okay.
It would be rescinding that exemption P-47-84.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I would, I would move that the Board of Montezuma County Commissioners rescind the exemption number P-47-84 for the applicants, Michael Goodman and Deborah Cody, and to then...
Rezone? Rizone the Brown Family Trust property to the...
Okay, then rezon the Brown Family Trust property, creating a 35-acre more or less parcel.
Goodman, Cody?
Brown Family Trust.
Yeah.
So, we...
Mm-hmm. Good.
That gets everything you need?
Yes, sir.
Well, you might have to help me out. He's not here. That probably wasn't very funny. We've got a motion in a second to... We have a motion in a second to, um, for rezoning requests for rescinding of exemption P-47-84, where his applicants, Michael Goodman and Deborah Cody, wish to convey 15 acres more or less to the Brown Family Trust. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, if I can...
Tell them to get this thing straight out of there, leave it alone.
Yes.
Now, if we can just have your...
So, got the final plat here and everything?
Well, Mr. Boyd, um... The way that you described that with Mr. Boyd is every time that there's a change, he gets...
You know, when there is a new tract created, and we're not creating a new tract now, which is very, so he does, is not involved.
And just changing property.
C.D.O. is not involved in this process, yes.
Okay. But the easement that goes from the highway north belongs to him. So, whenever there's additional development, because it's restricted to a certain amount of tracks, they have to go in and renegotiate the easement agreement, which is where...
Because C.D.O., because he says, as you develop this, then you're gonna be paying more for that.
Correct.
Okay.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing.
The blue pen?
Yes, sir.
The proverbial blue pen?
Yes.
Man, I like them shoes.
I know, they're fancy, huh?
Well, I got some black ones just like that, man.
Are them the same kind of shoes as these?
I don't know.
They look similar.
These are Echo shoes. Are they yours? Mm-hmm. They look pretty close.
My Walmart.
They're called arthritic loafers, is what they're called. Arthritis loafers.
Pretty comfortable.
Well, he's in the back. Something's up.
Is that everything that you had?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, is it okay if we have Monty come up here? Monty, why don't you come on up on this? This isn't on the agenda, but this is, uh, the agenda that says that we...
You know, it usually says that we might take up any other matters that come before the board. I didn't see it today on there.
I just put this on there.
But, it's alright. We're, I mean, it's understood, and we're in public, so that's, that's fine. You know, but for this type of thing, it might, you know, it's something that, depending on how much you guys want to discuss, it is something that you can do in executive session, and it's not something you have to do, obviously, in executive session, but, but you can.
How do you feel about it?
Oh, hell, I'm an open book.
Well, let's, Commissioner's okay with just...
I'm okay with discussing it.
Three, four weeks ago, I came to Melissa and said, "My contract's about up. How would you like to proceed?" And since then, we've gone back and forth, visiting through a few things. July the 15th essentially is where, and there's some ambiguity there. My contract is up and my pay, monthly pay stipend is up at that point. As you well know, we're still two months, plus or minus a week or two, from being done with the project. So, we need to establish a path forward. I proposed, you continue my monthly stipend until we get to certificate of occupancy or the project is finished. There's my proposal. I decided not to do a change order on this. I think that I would be well... I think my, my chances of prevailing, should it get to that point, are greater than average because the scope has changed $2 million since we negotiated my fee, and, uh, that's not what I want to do to this project, because this project has seen no change order since its inception, other than the one change order that was agreed upon for the additional funding for the courts and the finances in the courts. So, with that, I'm gonna, uh, just, you gentlemen decide. It's entirely up to you.
So, I don't know how much that I discussed with you guys recently, the contract. I mean, I discussed it with Melissa a little bit. I don't think the contract is up. I, I think that, uh, the, the amount of $135,000 was for the entirety of the project, according to what I think our concern was back 18 months ago, was that what if this went over? We don't want to, you know, have any sort of incentive to go over the 18 months, but if it does go over, that the, the contract encompasses the entire term of it until project completion. And so, I don't, I don't think it's a black and, I mean, it's a gray area at all. I do think that you guys are certainly welcome to consider, you know, what else you want to do, and, and as far as, you know, additional pay, I think that's, that's something that can be renegotiated, and absolutely, I don't think there's any problem with that. But, but I think the contract's pretty clear. I mean, initially, what I did is I brought them both for you. I brought the initial one that, um, was proposed, uh, that, and this is what we changed. It said, before, "CZF will commence work on January 15th, 2016, and shall continue for a period of 18 months or until project completion, whichever comes first." And, you know, understanding that we couldn't have that type of a contract, we changed it. So, that one was not the one that was signed, not the whichever comes first, 18 months or completion. We took that language out and changed it to, "CZF will commence work on January 15th and shall continue until project completion, period." And so, I, I don't think it's unclear. I think no court is gonna go with that reading. They're gonna, they're gonna understand that the 135 was for the entire term until project completion. Very confident of that. I think any attorney will, will interpret it that way. It doesn't mean that, you know, maybe the value of the services is, is greater, maybe you all should consider, you know, paying additional amount of money, but, um, the, the 135, and additionally, I think Monty's concerned with that back then was that, well, you know, what if he needs to go out and get more work or, or whatnot to supplement income? And so, to accommodate that, we added that language to the second one, not in his initial proposal, but to the one that, that we accepted and that he signed. We added language saying that final payments may be withheld until project completion. However, nothing in this contract shall prevent CZF from seeking other employment. It's understood that if the project extends beyond 18 months, that CZF will seek additional gainful employment to supplement his income. So, I mean, I think we put that in there for him with the understanding that if it extended past 18 months, and, by the way, 18 months ends July 15th. If it extended past 18 months, you know, we didn't, nobody wanted Monty to be in bind, so that he was obviously allowed to go out and seek other funding as well. But, he's on the job until project completion, for the 135.
Let me ask you one question, John. It showed, I think, in that contract, as I read it, that, that the $135,000 was based on a percentage of the total project.
You've gotta base it on something. And again, just like you don't want to say, uh, you know, it, it's gonna be whichever comes first, which is language we took out, because that gives incentive potentially to make it longer, so that more money can be earned. You don't, you base it off of a percentage of what our budget, we wanted our budget to be. You don't want to say 1.8% of whatever the budget ends up being, because that, I mean, you don't put that in contracts. That's not, that's not a negotiable term, because that makes it so that there's incentive to, to, to increase the budget, because that would increase, would increase salary. So, you know, that's not the deal. The deal is...
So, you don't, you don't feel that comes into play, that, that the 135 was based on the $7.5 million proposed project cost?
It was based on that.
Based on that.
But it doesn't increase if you increase the budget.
Budget.
Right? It can't increase if you increase the budget, or all you're doing is giving the, the contract or incentive to increase the budget, so they make more money. And, and, and that goes contrary to what an owner's representative's supposed to be doing for, for the county. I mean, understand, like, so then what if we get, if, then you owe me more money? It's 9.8 million now, or 10 million, you owe me more money? And, and that, that works contrary to, you don't want that type of incentive in there. So, I mean, the, the money's the money and the term is the term, and, you know, that's what's agreed to. It doesn't mean that, you know, other things didn't come up. It doesn't mean that, you know, there's not more value in it, and I think that certainly you guys can, can consider and negotiate, you know, additional payment or additional services or that type of thing. I'm just, uh, I mean, I respectfully disagree, and I'm very confident that if, if, you know, any attorney looks at this or any court of law looks at this, especially understanding that it was changed from the initial 18 months or until project completion, whichever comes first. That language was taken out to say, "No, it's until project completion." And then we added the language, "It's expected that additional employment will be sought out after that 18 months." But, you're staying on to project completion. It's clear. Black and white, no court's gonna rule differently than that. You know, not, not that it shouldn't necessarily ever get there. I mean, I think that, uh, like I said, you know, maybe there's other things that you guys want to negotiate. That's not, that's not my, my purview. I'm just telling you what the contract says and how that will be enforced.
You read that differently.
And so does my attorney, who read it once John redlined it, and since John made the agreement more open-ended by contradicting himself from his period sentence down below to looking for work, it's unenforceable. No. Because all I will do, John, is seek other employment. I mean, you essentially made this a less binding document. That's why I did not contradict your red lines, because you weakened it. Now, we can sit here and we can...
So, what you're saying is that you agreed to a contract hoping that it was unenforceable? Is that what you're telling us?
No, I would never say that, John. You're not gonna give me a lawyer trick here. What I'm saying is...
What did you just say? I'm sorry.
The document that you created was open-ended. So, let's, let's back up a hair. Also, the 135 based on the contract value would be true if the scope hadn't changed. The scope has definitely changed to the tune of $2 million. Now, any contract adjuster, any contractor will understand that if a scope changes $2 million, then there will be adjustments across the board. It is undisputable that there was a $2 million scope change from 7.5 to plus or minus 9.5. Can't argue this.
When did that $2 million change take place?
Well, originally, when we did the, um, the original thing, when we selected the contractor and they did the original cost estimate, it was 11.4, something like that.
That's my question, that's not answered. My question is, when did that take place, the $2 million adjustment?
Well, when we...
Was it 18 months ago? It was 18 months ago, correct?
No. No, because when, when they value engineered the building, when we told them to start bringing down the cost of that, they took the courtrooms and took a lot of the...
The top, primarily.
Yeah, the, some of the things that they felt like they could replace with, with what the courts had wanted, with something of a lesser, lesser value. Then Eric and the courts said, "We, we want what was in there." So, that's when Judge Walker and I went to the underfunded courts and got the 350 million and, or 1,000 and then 600 to some odd thousand. So, there's, there's a million dollars that was added back in. And that was in the original cost of the project, which had been value engineered out and then put back in. Is that, isn't that correct?
I believe what you're saying is accurate.
Yeah.
Well, my point is this. It didn't happen yesterday. It happened at the beginning of the project.
We're in the middle of it.
Why didn't you come to us and say, "Hey, uh, there's been a $2 million change. We need to talk about this," instead of waiting to... That's what I don't understand.
There, there was, first of all, it all didn't happen 18 months ago. It has been progressive from the original 11.4 down to 8.4, and then we added back 500 from the underfunded, and that brought it up to close to 9, and then the soft costs associated. So, it didn't just happen 18 months ago. Secondly, you gentlemen didn't know what the value was gonna be when I sat where John was sitting, and you told me what to base my estimate around, 7.5 million. I went outside, I based my estimate around 7.5 million. That is not the contract that we currently have. So, the argument could be made that we're at plus or minus 7.5 now. We've elapsed 18 months, and I could be done. That's not the contract that we're faced with right now, not that piece, just the contracting piece. We're, we're faced with a project that is still two months from completion, that is $2 million greater than the original value. So, that's where it's at.
I think, to me, and over the original estimate, when we originally said we were giving 7...
7.5.
7.5. Then they, when they actually did it and took it to bid to the contractors, that's when the contractors came up with 11.4 and were like, "Oh, and..."
And I did not, to answer your question specifically, I didn't feel there was a need for a change order. I really felt like that we would be very close. I was told throughout, and I shared with you fellas many times on the agenda, that the schedule would pull up, pull up, pull up, and I figured mid-July, we might still make. We didn't realize, you know, they had said August 15th, August 15th, but we're gonna pull it up, August 20th, we're gonna pull it up. Here we are now, we know that we're not gonna be done until the end of August. I don't want to hit it with a change order, that'd be $36,000, because if I write a change order for this, it would be for the full scope amount. I'm not gonna write a change order for less. I'm saying, pay me my stipend for the rest of this project and we'll avoid a change order. This has been a very successful project. And I suspect it will continue to be so. But there is no denying that, um, the scope of the project is greater by $2 million than what I based that estimate around. And again, I would rather we part friends.
Well, I think we all would too, and I don't feel that's an unfair, I don't feel that that's unfair till, to have you stay on under your contracted amount until we get the certificate of occupancy or, you know, we get the final completion of that building. I think we're too far, I think we're too far down the road now to start nitpicking over, but I mean, we, we could and we can fight and argue and let, I, I don't want the, I don't want the...
No, we won't do that, because I won't do that.
I don't want the attorneys to start, I don't wanna...
This isn't, this is a black-white issue. I mean, I'm assuring you guys, like, I, I think that it's fair for you guys to consider, you know, additional compensation if, if you want to, but, um, I don't buy for a second that any court, I mean, when we changed it to shall continue until project completion, it means until project, we got rid of 18 months or completion, whichever comes first, and changed it until project completion. It's clear. Um, it doesn't mean that, you know, maybe the services didn't change and, and get harder and improve, and so if you all think it's fair to, to compensate accordingly, that's absolutely okay and valid. But, the contract is that he, he's, he's to work until, until project completion for that amount, and if it's not completed within 18 months, then it gave us discretion to withhold the rest of, I don't know what's been paid so far or not, whether the entire amount's been paid, but us discretion to withhold the rest of it until project completion. And that way, it doesn't give incentive to, to blow up the costs and it doesn't give incentive to drag the thing out. You know, that, those were the reasons for those changes, and now I think, um, you know, maybe circumstances have changed. Doesn't change the contract, but certainly circumstances have changed, and that's why the contract took that into consideration, was that circumstances might change. It might not complete actually in 18 months. I mean, that was contemplated before, you know. You know, I, I'm, I'm sure this is not an issue that we're gonna get ruled against, but I, with that said, maybe it's, it's valid for you guys to consider, okay, well, what, you know, what's the best way to proceed from there?
This is the crux of the deal. I mean, the last couple of months, I mean, this is when everything gets wrapped up, inspected and made ready to move in and...
But continues on the same progress.
Right.
We're doing very well. If, if July 15th, he were gone and didn't come back, I don't know what would happen with the end of that. You know, I think he's got a good rapport with all the people who work there, and it was unfortunate that our superintendent...
Brian Jordan.
That he, that he changed, because I feel, and I, I think Patrick's, he's coming along.
I think that he's, uh...
You know, I mean, he's got a different personality, but, um, he's picking up as quickly as he can, and I continue, I just don't want to see me to try to take over, because my learning curve is gonna be, and I don't, that, me to finish in two months is not...
Mine, this is a deal, you're a good guy, but I totally disagree with what she just said. I believe we have a contract there, and I believe we'll be just fine. And, uh, you know, I tell you, our jobs actually would be very easy, because we got some money in the bank, and we could just give you the six... we got some money in the bank and we could just give you the $16,000 and go on our merry way. But I, in good conscience, cannot be shaken down with a contract like that. I, our lawyer has never stirred us wrong. And I look at this this way, you know, I drive by there all the time. Your Circle Zebra stuff is sitting right there working over there. It's been sitting there for the last couple of weeks. So you're making money. I believe the project opened up thanks for you to your company to make money because you're right there. And I believe that if you was to walk away, I mean, I can understand why for for the $16,000, you would be willing, because as long as we're commissioners, you would never be the owner of a course again. Be, you know, this would turn sour. And I just, I cannot, in good conscience, pay the $16,000 worth, I feel like, decisions. I just can't do it.
It's perfectly fine. We can part ways as friends. Let me first say, though, that my company has not made a dime on that contract. So I want to make sure that that is not ill-spoken on this record. That my contract-
They've been drilling.
My contract is with CenturyLink, and I put in fiber for CenturyLink all over the four corners. That contract over there has nothing to do with what my guys are doing. So I wanna make sure that that's understood. You are the one that told me what to base my estimate around. I'm not gonna go down the change order road with you, although I would prevail. I will walk out of here and be done on July the 15th. But I won't go down the change order road with you because I don't wanna see this project do that. As for your opinion of that document, just like John's, the courts will decide the validity of that. And I have found through my travels, attorneys don't make very good businessmen. So there was a $2 million adjustment there. That's a scope change in anyone's eyes. We can go down any road you choose, Commissioner Sukla.
I would. I'm not willing to pay $135,000. That's, that's-
I'm not here saying that that is the best answer for you. I'm here telling you what I'm willing to do.
I've told you what I'm willing to do. I'm not willing to pay $135,000. I mean, there's three of us, but-
That's a $2 million scope change. In all right, in all likelihood, in all rightness, there should be a change order on the behalf of Circle Zebra, this contract. There's, that's that's contracting. You gentlemen told me what to base my estimate around and I did.
An owner's rep is, the purpose of an owner's rep is to try to save the county money, not cost the county money. It makes perfectly sense to me that, number one, if you was, it would be an incentive, as earlier described, to increase the contract, to make it last longer, if those two things were valid.
Scope changes are outside of dragging out contracts. I told you gentlemen when we interviewed, that legitimate scope changes, I will never allow a contractor to get up on me. However, legitimate scope changes are legitimate scope changes. If you hit rock, you get paid for rock. So to say that, you know, that in contracting, 7.5 is the number, we know that's not the number. The number was 11.4.
Actually, the number's 135.
Yeah, that's the, I, that's what I wanna emphasize, that the number's 135 and that's, that's what you all agreed to in the contract. It wasn't dependent on whatever the, you know, whether it came down to 6 million or up to 12 million, it was the 135. And the services were what was listed in the RFP, and that's listed in here too, that, you know, it's all services listed in the RFP will be performed through completion of the project. You know, you guys are gonna have, and again, I'm not gonna necessarily advise you right now on what to do, it's completely up to you, but I mean, you all would have other requests as well if you lost your owner's rep on July 15th when they didn't say anything about this thing ending on July 15th. It says through completion of the project, 135. So you're owed services through then. But that doesn't mean that, you know, maybe the value has changed and you can't renegotiate something. But according to this, the owner's rep is working through completion of the project for 135. Doesn't mean that there's not other considerations for me.
I think mine has did a fantastic job, but my question is made. I'm not willing to pay $135,000.
Are you willing to complete that project for the 135 in that contractual agreement?
What I will say is I will be seeking gainful employment. You can interpret that any way you choose, because those are John's words that contradicted his his previous two paragraphs. So I would not sit here on the record and tell you I won't live up to anything. What I will tell you is I'll be seeking gainful employment elsewhere.
Right, which he's allowed to do. He's allowed to seek additional employment to supplement that income. That's the language of it. I mean, we agreed to that, because that was his concern, what if this goes past 18 months? So I put that language in for him.
So what that's really saying is that he's not gonna be on the job. He's gonna be out looking for other work, so I mean-
To supplement his income, he could seek additional employment, but it is to complete the job too. So it's really to supplement it, not to replace it. But to supplement. I mean, that's the language used, additional gainful employment to supplement his income. You know, but the 135 is to project completion and to complete everything in the RFP. We definitely do need a CO, which doesn't come in until whenever, August or whatnot. I don't know what more needs to be done. I mean, mine is in a better position. You guys might even know more about what that entails. I mean, I don't think it means that any duties can be neglected.
If you just read the 135,000, it'd be easy, the fact that you got that 1.8%.
Yeah, that's what it's based off of.
Yeah, 'cause that throws a wrinkle in it, because if it had have been a $9 million project at 1.8, we would have been paying him $170,000, $180,000.
In which case you might have chose to go with a different owner's rep. I mean, you can't have a fluctuating, you know, amount.
That's what I'm saying.
It's black white, I mean-
So payments will be withheld, you know, until project completion. However, nothing, you know, that's based on that number. But, you know, like I said, I think you guys may, you know, I don't wanna get into negotiations, because I'm just trying to tell you what the contract is.
But my fear is we've left him an out where he can go down to Albuquerque and find another job or, I mean, when when we've given him that out on seeking gainful employment elsewhere, I don't know. I'm afraid that's gonna mean when we aren't paying anything for the next two months for him to be on the job. I mean, I'm gonna tell you what, it'd be hard for me to go to the job not getting paid and-
But that's not completing the terms of the RFP until project completion, so.
Between rock and a hard spot.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still not taking a position on whether or not anything should be negotiated. Just saying what was negotiated.
The contractor, James, is the one that has to get all that stuff down. Their contract.
Right.
The owner's rep is kind of like overseeing.
An overseer, right.
So, anything that goes wrong, it's still up to James to fix. And I don't know, you know, I know the scope of this is a lot greater, but I've built several houses. And did you have the owner's rep when you built your house? No. The contractor is the one, has the responsibilities, has the contract we have with the contractor and will get our-
That's true.
Would you consider negotiating with Flat P to finish the project regardless of how much it takes?
Yes, sir. I think that I think that you're inside of two months getting your certificate of occupancy. If everything continues on this current path, should have the COR the last couple of days of August would be my, that's what's scheduled currently. That's a month and a half. Really, at the end of the day, it's a month and a half. So if we prorate what my monthly is and it comes up to a month and a week, I'm fine with that. If it comes up to a month and three weeks, which is essentially what the end of August would be, then that is what it is too. I'm not here trying to get at the county. It's not my goal. This has been a very good project. It's been a successful project. I'd like to see it finished that way. I know what that document says. And that document based my fee around 7.5 million dollars. And that's no longer the case. It's 1.8% of a value that we needed to establish in order to get to any type of budgetary number. And that's what we did. So yes. If we think that's six weeks, we're looking at 11. That brings us to the end of the August timeframe. Isn't that right? Half of seven and a half? 11.
Can you recalculate? I can't get on here.
I mean, I think either way, just to prevent this from happening again, we do another contract. If you guys want to avoid this and start another one, we put it in writing just to make sure that we don't get to the same spot where we don't have this certificate of occupancy for another three weeks after that and you're having to pay more money, unless you want to pay more money based on the time it takes.
That's what I'm saying. Just if he's willing to
Right, but we're talking month and a half, whatever, so that's out of the equation.
Would you see this through to the end for $10,000?
Which is what?
Yes, sir.
I move we renegotiate a contract with Monty Giles to finish the courthouse, whatever date that is, and have an enhanced certificate of occupancy for $10,000.
There's been a motion in a second to approve a renegotiation of the contract with Monty Giles for $10,000. All of those are paid.
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll bring you guys the contract before, well, obviously, you guys can accept it or not.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Is that all we got?
What do you got?
Public, public.
Public comment?
Public comment.
We got some public out here.
I didn't even put public comment on.
Come on up.
Looking for another motion?
I move we-
Oh.
Go ahead.
I got a question. I feel like that we need to be doing something on this broadband. We're at the bottom. We're almost holding everything up right now. And either we need to get out or get in.
Yeah.
Which way?
Yeah.
But if we're gonna do it, then we need to, we're gonna, if we have to go to sales tax, we're running in in 2018 or 19.
18, ten to nine zero, the sales tax? Would be 18, November of 18?
I'm sorry, I'm having an urgent here.
Yeah, nobody, they're all having an urgent here.
Okay, eleven.
Now the battery's dead.
Battery's dead, that's three months.
Give him the-
Okay. I'm just saying that if we're gonna get, if we're gonna go for that sales tax, we don't have a whole lot of time left to get ready for it. By the time we engineer the project, determine the price, bid it, and this type of thing, we're on the short end of the stick already.
I gotta tell you what I feel. I don't want it here in sales tax. After what I seen in Oregon, I think there's another way. And I'd rather the school got the money. I'd rather the school, they're gonna go for a sales tax.
Yeah, but what you're talking, you're not talking about building the project, you're talking about promoting the project in Oregon.
Yeah.
And promoting and building are two different things entirely.
Right, in Oregon, the private, the private enterprise came in and got them.
Right.
The county didn't pay a dime, they did the city.
But that's what I'm talking about, is what that private company did there, we're basically the ones who are gonna have to do it here. We don't have a private company that's gonna do that.
Well, maybe we would, after they hear what happened in Oregon and realize that the take rate is almost every broadband user. Because that's, talk about business. That's the key to broadband, or the take rate. If your take rate is 90%, we'll have them lined up.
Have we gotten this?
And the take rate was 90% or greater because the high schools stood and sell on it and get part of their profit.
Do we have anything with this organ, the gentleman up in Oregon, yet scheduled to hear the talks?
He called me last, at our commissioner meeting on Monday, and he's having trouble with that principal. I could get a telephone conference with him, but he wants that principal involved in it.
And the principal is having a hard time getting him to get on, get on a phone conversation with us?
To get it organized.
I mean, it's the middle of summer. I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
Well, yeah, because it was the last. I agree that we need the broadband, but I think the way we've been going around is wrong.
No, I do too. That's what I'm saying. That if we leave it like it's been going, we're not gonna go anywhere, anytime, period. It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, you make a good point. But I tell you, it was very convincing listening to this commissioner. And I don't understand a lot, but-
I agree. If it's a good, good way to promote it, I have no problem whatsoever. That's a good thing. And I'm not, I'm not trying to promote sales tax. But that's the only way I see that this thing will get financed. The only people, the only private company that I think that handles this is in parlayed, and they're not going to.
Yet, but, you know, Delta, that, that much companies could spend $90 million for Delta Motros.
Motros, yeah.
And-
Not sure how they, I think they saw that as the next utility and decided they were willing to gamble, you know, to gamble with it, but I'm I'm in a quandary about the- I'm, uh, I'm in a quandary about the, the whole dead gum deal, because I, I don't know if it's government's responsibility to act as that, what should be a private enterprise out there, a private company doing, doing this, because they're the ones that are gonna, I, I mean, in a, in a sense, if we pass a sales tax and we go out and build all the infrastructure and do all of that, and then sign up with these ISPs and let them, I don't, I don't see where the county's ever gonna recoup that money that, that we're gonna do a sales tax. We're basically subsidizing private, private, private business.
Uh, you're not gonna recoup it from the ISPs, you know, well, you are, you are and you're not. And I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to point out the difference here. The, the ISPs are gonna pay the provider of the service, for that service. It's, it would be just like what's going on here now with, uh, the city and the ISPs. The city charges the ISPs a, a certain amount based on the, the usage that they're gonna have to take. And that is the money that then would, uh, recoup to pay the, uh, not, pay the project. But then the ISPs take that amount of money, add their, uh, operation and profit to that, and that's what they charge the customer. We, we have nothing, we would never be in contact with the customer. I, I agree that the higher the take rate, the better the, the thing looks. But I think if we sit on it for much longer, it's gonna be a dead project, because we're gonna lose a lot of the support that we could gain now, that we can't gain if we let it go too long.
With data safe, or with...
Consumer, or with county residents?
Yeah, county resident. If, if the county does it, we don't have the money, so we're gonna have to, to go after the money, but we don't need to, you know, nobody knows how much it's gonna be at this point, so... And that's where, till, till the project's engineered, one way or the other, even if the private company decides to do it, they're gonna have to be the engineering on it. Whether they decide whether to do it for our or not.
Well, the, the commissioner was gonna have the, the private company on the phone call, and the principal. So, he's just gonna talk about the business end on the, by the private business, and, and then on the selling end by the school. But, what I see, maybe it's gonna come next year, but I go, is it the school, they're gonna try to get a mill levy increase, or a...
I don't know, I think they've been talking about doing a, uh, mill levy, but the mill levy increase would be a property tax. Can the school do a sales tax?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Depends on your question. What's your election question?
Well, the, the hospital is self-taxing.
Well, hospitals and schools are...
I don't, I mean, I don't really answer to that.
I don't.
Why, why wouldn't they be able to get their... How do they do their makers, Mike?
The opportunity for a sales tax was presented to us. Now, uh, we're going after typical mill levy increases and/or bonds, but there is a way that you can ask for a sales tax. Now, the city itself has to do it for us and make us, and then allocate it to us.
There you go.
It's an effective city sales tax with an allocation to the...
And then allocate it to the school.
So, here would be a county tax. Like, if you guys get the question on it, would be a county tax allocated to it.
Right.
So, that would bring us back to the, we would be, I know the school's gonna do it, they have said they're gonna do it, but I know, they, they lost 31 teachers, they're gonna do it. So, that would put the county competing with them, the broadband versus the, the school.
Because your, your private company up there isn't competing with the school or vice versa.
No, but I mean, if we propose a sales tax.
Well, yeah, but...
Or the broadband.
But what I'm saying, oh, you mean...
A ballot issue.
A ballot issue against the mill levy.
Mill levy versus the sales tax for broadband?
I personally think that the...
It's all tax, whether they're...
Chances of the sales tax passing is gonna be pretty slim, personally. But I don't see any other way that the county can do it without something like that.
Yeah, financially, we're not, I mean, with our finances they are right now, there's no way we can get into that.
I don't want to compete with the school for a, a sales tax. I mean, as a, personally as a voter, I would vote for those 31 teachers over the broadband myself.
Well, a lot of people would, a lot of people would.
See, you'll see it go both ways.
Well, it goes both ways, you split your vote, and nothing happens.
Nobody wins.
Do you, do you have to have an...
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna do a bond issue.
In 17 or 18?
In 17, this November, we'll have a question on the ballot.
That's above and beyond your best grant, you're doing a bond issue as well?
Yes, sir, we have to have $5 million match.
Oh, we could get a match, gotcha. Those best grants go with a match.
It was discounted from roughly 46% down to 5 million, because that's all we, that's all of the, based on our population, that's all we could pass anyway, so...
And will it be a special election?
No, ma'am, it's gonna be on the November ballot.
Is there...
It'd be a special one.
Is there, is, is, but there's nothing else on the ballot, then perhaps it will be.
Not this November, there's no...
The only thing that I've been notified of so far is that the Dolores School just request to participate, you know, that's the only notification I've received.
So, Dolores is potentially looking for some kind of mill levy?
I, no, I think that's more of a board member type thing. I haven't heard of any type of question.
Oh, okay.
I think our property, uh, orders are taxed too high now. I think they're about maxed out, but it's...
The Gipps tax increases, you're the... Apparently, it's gonna happen.
How about we do this, how about, um, if I don't hear from anybody next Monday, I'll call them again.
Well, we're down to 11th hour, and we need to get this meeting out.
Well, Karen Sheik is, has called a broadband update meeting for...
This week?
July 6th at 9 o'clock.
They already sent you the newspaper that they were gonna go for, but they can't wait.
But how, how are we gonna go?
They'll probably do, try to do the sales tax and go against teachers.
If they do that, it'd have to be the city to take it over.
I think they're just gonna try and flesh out their system within the city limits, is what they're talking about. They got that million dollars from Dola to help do that, so I think they're...
There's been that, that, that line going around from the...
Oh, for the Osprey.
I think that the million dollars is half the project.
Well, it was stated that, and this is real news, by the way, Jim.
This is real news.
Not fake news, this is real news, yeah.
It was stated that, uh, that they had never done the, hooked the businesses up. And that what they wanted to do was hook the businesses up.
That's not true, my businesses hooked up to it.
Yeah, I read that too, though, it did say that they didn't, maybe they didn't complete hooking all the businesses up.
Yeah, but wasn't you on the City Council?
Well, what they proposed to do, damn, I've been on Empire now, I've been on City Council, I'm getting, I'm getting nailed around here like a... And what they had originally planned to do was go, uh, on Broadway, the one that we have on Broadway. And then, uh, the Osprey, that's it, I'm just gonna take it around.
Well, let's, let's wait till Monday.
Fair enough.
For our agenda, dropping.
Do you, are any of you going to be at the meeting on Thursday?
I'll, I'll go. If I don't get blowed up tomorrow night.
I was planning up north, but...
Good. We'll both be there.
I'll be, I'll be in the seats.
Up on, up in the mountain?
Well, what I've seen so far is talk between Karen and Shane, and nothing gets done. And I don't see how anything can get done.
I thought you was gonna say how poor my fence is. Alright, anything else?
Move to turn.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second, that you're in all those in favor? Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, Mike.